Hello and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, February the 22nd. We are get, before we get started, I would like to take a roll call. Councilmember Darby.
President.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Oliver. Councilmember Harley.
Present.
Councilmember Fields.
Present.
Councilmember McCoy.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Field.
Present.
Councilmember Spadola.
Present.
Councilmember Cabetta.
Present.
Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Bracy. Alrighty, again thank you.
Present.
Okay, Councilmember Bracy, I have you accounted for. Again, I want to thank everyone for joining us today. We have one item on the agenda. And I'm going to let Michelle introduce our presenter.
Yes, Chairman, and actually, we do have Director Charlotte Barnes on.
Okay.
Director Barnes, wasn't sure if you want to make some opening comments?
Certainly, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President and honorable members of council. I have here today Mr. Mike Nadal of PFM, who is the consultant that was engaged to do the benchmarking and compensation study for elected officials. What you will hear tonight is the report as it relates to city council. It is a draft report, subject to change. And he will walk you through the methodology and any recommendations that he has. I did share in advance with Michelle that I do have a hard stop. When this, I had a previous engagement when this meeting was scheduled, so I do have a hard stop. I was really supposed to only hang out until 5:30, but since we're getting started late, I try to stick with you until at least about 5:45. But I do need to make my way to my next engagement.
Okay, thank you.
So, without further ado, Mr. Nadal.
Thank you, and thank you, Council President and members of council, for inviting me here this afternoon evening to share some of our preliminary findings with you. We appreciate the opportunity to support the city in thinking about some of the issues that we've been asked to study. In terms of, and I do have a, I can present if, I'm not able to share my screen. I don't know if that's helpful or if you'd like me to just speak regarding our findings.
I apologize. What was your question?
Oh, I would have a PowerPoint that I could share, but it doesn't look like that's enabled for me.
Okay, you can go to, to the next, you can go right into the presentation.
Did, did, I'm sorry, WI-10 will give you access.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, you should have access now. You can let us know if you don't.
Thank you. Hopefully that's visible for you all. Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
So, we'll start just by providing an overview of what work we've been doing, how we've been seeking to contextualize the compensation that the city provides for its elected officials, including the mayor, council members and council leadership, and the city's elected treasurer. We've done other benchmarking for the city over the years, and as I'm sure you all understand well, it's hard to find a good comparative match for the city of Wilmington. As you know, you're the only city of your core scale and size within the state of Delaware. And when you then start to look beyond the state, you encounter different localized economic differences, differences in scale, differences in form of government and organizational structure of government, a whole range of factors that make it hard to find a close peer group for this kind of benchmarking exercise. So, the approach that we took was really to look at a fairly broad range of governments of some scale within the state. The state itself, the Newcastle County, much bigger in terms of population size, and then Newark and Dover, meaningfully smaller, but the next largest cities in the state. And then looked at a mix of mostly similarly sized or governments of a decent scale around the broader metropolitan area, with the extra additions of Philadelphia and Baltimore, not so much because they're, again, a great direct match, but because given the urban character of those communities and given our interest in not just triangulating around what a reasonable pay level might be, but also to look at different practices in terms of how compensation is periodically adjusted for elected officials, how benefits may be provided for elected officials. We thought they would be good mid-Atlantic points of references as recognizing though that they're much larger cities. So, taking all those differences into account, one of the points I just want to emphasize upfront is, we don't recommend taking the median of this group and pegging ourselves to that. Rather, we look at this as information that can help provide some arguments around good practices and give you a sense of the range of compensation for these types of roles, from which you can treat them as reference points to potentially inform a Wilmington-specific approach to what makes sense for Wilmington itself. Just to further share some of the meaningful differences that I've been speaking about, you can see here in terms of population size, resident population, nighttime population, how some of these communities are pretty close in scale, but others like Philadelphia or the state as a whole are, of course, much larger, have much larger budgets, much larger employee populations. You also see demographic differences, and that can be important if you're thinking about compensation because housing costs or community, the task base that's supporting public service compensation can be very different from place to place, as can the challenges and the mix of policy issues and the complexity of policy issues that elected officials may be responsible for. So, we just thought it was important to, again, have a little context for who we were benchmarking against and why frankly none of them are perfect twins, but we hope in the aggregate they can provide a useful mix of reference points. Turning next to legislative responsibilities across each of these different forms of government and regional reference points. Another factor that is very significant is to think about what, in each of these jobs, other elected officials as well, are the responsibilities, are the expectations, are the roles equivalent? And for legislators, of course, it's a depending job no matter where you are. But there are, within this group, the largest cities that consider their elected council members, in this case Philadelphia and Baltimore, to be full-time positions. Whereas all of the others, albeit with varying degrees of commitment and responsibility and time expectations, consider their elected legislators to be more of a part-time responsibility with the expectation that those public servants will also have some kind of meaningful outside employment or other means of support. Then just looking at the salaries, as of the most current completed calendar year, you see quite a range reflective of the very broad range.
We can't hear you, sir.
Mike?
Yes.
You're kind of muffled now.
I don't know that I did anything different, but.
That's better.
Okay, I'll try. Apologies. In terms of salaries, you see that the shaded full-time legislative positions are much, very much at the top of the range in terms of overall pay levels. Within the mix of part-time legislative salaries, Wilmington, as of this most recent year, you know, falls somewhere in the middle, below the larger state of Delaware, the larger population, Newcastle County, part-time compensation levels, but roughly twice as high as the much smaller cities with less, perhaps less complex sets of responsibilities and issues to address in Dover and Newark. And in a very comparable range to some other regional governments that are by and large similar in size, like Delaware County, just up the road, or Rockville, Maryland. Again, there's some outliers in the mix, but in broad reststrokes, the city falls roughly within a range where you might expect it to fall, given some of the factors that contextualize legislative. We did also look at legislative leadership, and in the full report there's some additional data in detail around committee assignments and some other roles that can receive supplemental compensation because of those additional duties. The most common being for the role of council president or the equivalent in different cities or governments. And again, for contextualization, we've tried to flag some of the differences in terms of how those roles can be structured. But in general, these are, again, areas of heightened responsibility and time and other demands. And accordingly, there's almost always a premium attached in terms of somewhat higher compensation for that role, as is the case with the city. In terms of your relative position, again, Wilmington falls below the state in Newcastle County, above Dover, not far off from Delaware County, well below the equivalent roles considered to be full-time for Philadelphia and Baltimore, also much larger communities. We also took a look at benefits and thought this was something worth thinking about. Of course, it has a cost. It also is part of what makes it possible for people to dedicate the time required to serve in an elected office. And in terms of a high-level kind of reference point, what you find is that in some smaller part-time roles, I'm sorry, part-time legislative roles for smaller communities or for some of the Pennsylvania communities even of similar size to Wilmington, health insurance is not part of the overall compensation package for elected legislators, but it's not uncommon. And, you know, within the state of Delaware, Wilmington's practice of providing health insurance equivalent to general employees is consistent with the other two larger governments, that being the state and Newcastle County. Likewise, you parallel those other large Delaware governments in terms of your retirement benefit structure. benefit structure, and then there are some different types of reimbursements, probably more common when you have extended travel requirements, such as for, you know, a state legislature that is in a bigger state with a farther distance from the community that is being represented. But one thing that is interesting and perhaps could be given some thought as prospectively the city looks to think about its structure, there are some models where there can be different retirement benefits for elected officials, recognizing that while some elected officials may end up spending quite a long career in public service with their community, others may do this for one or two terms, may have this as a chapter in their professional life and a chapter in their commitment to their community, but not necessarily the kind of career expectation you would see in a firefighter or a public works employee who would hopefully join for a full career. And in that context, you do see, for example, the city of Philadelphia provides more or less the same pension and retirement benefits for its elected officials, but allows for a more rapid vesting in those benefits, recognizing that an elected official's term or set of terms may not reach the full period that would otherwise be required. You may also have contribution requirements that are different, or even sometimes in other places we've worked with, more of a defined contribution model, a 401K-style plan that, again, helps contribute towards the retirement security of people who are taking time out of their lives for public service, but that does so in a way that reflects that there may not always be a multi-decade period of such service. Something else that we've been looking at is, how are these adjustments made when compensation is set? When does it raise? How is it raised? You do see a model, particularly with the state, where there's a, and some of the other communities we're looking at, where there's an independent compensation commission or a multi-stakeholder compensation commission appointed by often a mix of legislators and executive officials that seek to provide a sustainable way to work.
He's drifting off again.
Guidelines around looking to consumer prices and the like. And that can be a way of, again, getting some somewhat of an outside view. It's inherently, I believe, a delicate subject for elected officials to set their own pay, particularly given the concerns that most elected officials have about not burdening their constituents with higher tax rates. It becomes difficult to sometimes keep pace under the structures that exist and having that kind of linkage, and as you do, a regular expectation or review is a good practice for helping to ensure that you keep pace. We did also observe that with that, and even with the practice of regular review, the very good practice that you've established, for council pay has been pretty modest in terms of the increases made over time. We've looked back over the last effective, you know, term of office for current administration, the last eight years, we've looked back, or nearly eight years, we've looked back over 15 years, and across that whole period, there've only been two pay increases approved for council accumulated five percent. Inflation over that period, of course, has been several multiples higher, and the city's own executive and managerial cohort, with a meets expectations rating, has seen, you know, depending on whether you're looking at the last eight years over three times or the last 15 or so years over four times, the level of increase over time. And you see even greater divergence between the elected official pay rate changes over, in this case, that, you know, 15-year period, and some of the city's bargaining units. And to be fair, some of the bargaining unit wages also reflect the incorporation of certain premium pays into base wages that hadn't been part of base wages in the past. You could do some parsing around the total compensation package and maybe come out with a slightly different look at it, but fundamentally, the elected officials have chosen not to vote themselves or accept increases consistent with the rest of the municipal workforce. Here, just looking at the last, you know, or the current kind of term of the year period today, you can see how significantly the elected official compensation has been restrained relative to other executive and managerial city employees. And in the bar chart, you can see how if council compensation had just kept pace with other executive and managerial city workers, it would be a meaningful increment higher than it is today, still in that range below the state and Newcastle County and above smaller cities like Newark and Dover, but again, better keeping pace. And just as some observations around all that before opening it up for questions, again, no perfect twins for Wilmington, but we've sought to give you a view of the broader landscape to help decision-makers in the city have more information to address this sometimes awkward and difficult topic. Again, we found that in very broad reststrokes, you're about at the right place in the range, but you would also still be very much at the right place in the range if there were some upward adjustment, adjustment more commensurate with what it would have been to keep pace with the rest of your own workforce over the last seven to 15 years. And just note there that we, of course, are just providing information and our best thoughts on this, we recognize that ultimately, those are your decisions to make and your factors to weigh. I would just add into the mix of things for you all to consider that as part-time legislative roles are often closer to full-time than not and always demanding, keeping pace or catching up if you've fallen behind with your own workforce can not only help to maintain a reasonable pay relationship internally, but it also, over the longer haul of time, can be important for making sure that there continues to be the opportunity for economic diversity in a community's elected officials. You certainly, we certainly see many billionaires running for higher office around the country, and it's, there's some value to keeping your compensation sufficient so that folks of different backgrounds and different levels, you know, that you don't have to be independently wealthy to consider service in a job like this, given the time it takes and the sacrifices involved. So that's where we are with our work today. Just note, we kind of just got underway at the, during the week between Christmas and New Year's, and have been pushing hard to complete our work as timely as possible for the city's use, but we're not all the way there yet. We're still seeking to validate and execute some level of quality control on some of our findings, still in a few of the blanks that you may have noticed in a few of the tables. And we also very much welcome and appreciate this opportunity, not only to share where we are, but to hear your questions, your concerns, any feedback, guidance or thoughts about something we might be missing or ought to be looking at. We welcome all of that and appreciate, again, the opportunity to meet with you today.
This is Michelle with council staff, and I just want to bring one important matter to your attention, or maybe you already have the answer to it, but from looking at page 14 of the report, when we're talking about our internal workforce, I don't see mentioned on the chart the non-union employees and how council salaries has been done as based upon, I mean, ordinance and a compensation study that was done back in the 1980s. Basically, their salaries and COLAs are built upon what non-unions have. So it just to be helpful for page 14 or the chart that you have, and it shows the growth internally, when it looks at like the mayor, the president of council, it looks at FOP 1102, E and M, but I didn't see any mention of non-unions.
Okay.
And I can probably try to respond to that, Michelle. I think what was, there was an attempt, if you look at non-union, non-union is, their increases were more on par with just a standard COLA, and whereas the not, the executive and managerial, because they don't get step increases, their COLA, if you will, is a little bit larger. So there was, okay, if there's, if there needs to be an indexing up for the council salaries, it was thought that the greater or the, probably it's more aligned with what executive and managerial would have gotten as opposed to non-union. Just so you know, if we didn't use the meets expectations for executive and managerial, the number would be lower. So what is being indexed as a potential or something for you to consider as an increase for council, that number would be less if it was only indexed to non-union.
Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, Director Barnes, but, I mean, just for how like council salaries is done, I mean, it is just based upon the COLA of what non-unions have. I mean, so just for, I mean, just for benchmarking purposes, I mean, I mean, that would just been helpful to see here. You know, I just want to share that, I mean, for council, so that they're aware, so as they looking at this, and we looking at like patrol 40% and you looking at council members at 5.1%, it's like this other little population, which their salaries was based upon the COLAs that was given to non-unions, and when we look at this, you know, that's not there, it just seemed like something is amiss when you're looking here.
So what we'll do is, we'll have Mr. Nadol go back and do some indexing to just the approved COLAs for non-union employees only, and add that to the analysis as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Are there any council members who have any comments, questions? Anyone have their hand raised? Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you, thank you so much for bringing this presentation. This is something that I'd actually have requested quite a few months ago, so I do thank you for making certain that we have it in front of us. As we were looking to see what the compensation studies look like for the entire, the city, we just wanted to see exactly where we were as well. I do appreciate, I'm sorry, what was the gentleman?
Mike Nado.
Mike Nado?
Mike Nado.
Mr. Mike Nado, okay. I do appreciate...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCoy, Nado, N-A-D-O-L, Nado.
Nado, okay. Thank you very much, Director Barnes, Nado, Mr. Nado. Thank you so much. One of the pieces that you actually added, you made it very clear, and it's something that I always thought about, the fact that people who are independently wealthy are able to take the time and do this type of work, whereas the people who, like myself, are part-time, and want to make certain that we give it as much as we can to the city of Wilmington as, you know, as anyone else who wants to be in this role. And we want to make certain that we're, that we are not neglecting and missing opportunities to network, to meet and get all of the information, but we do have day jobs. And so we just want to, and so you could be a little bit more, I just felt as though the compensation could be a little bit increased a bit, then maybe people would not have to have those day jobs in order to be able to make this work and do all that they need to do for the job that they committed themselves to. So I just thank you so much for bringing this information, and also the COLA, it seems to me like, I looked down here and the COLA is like 2% at one portion and 3% at another, and I just wanted to know what, when you think of cost of living adjustments, what actually is the amount? I'm looking on page 13.
All right, thank you.
Is that...
Go ahead.
I'll try to answer that for you, Councilmember McCoy.
Yeah.
When we use COLA in the city's vernacular as a cost of living adjustment, that is the standard across-the-board increase that would be provided. It's not necessarily tied to the CPI or a cost of living, we just use the vernacular COLA. And I think if you're looking on the page that you're referencing, one year there was a 2%, we, one term, there was a 2% because that was the cumulative increases that non-union employees received over those four years, and then another term, it was 3% because that was the cumulative increases that employees received over that time period, non-union employees. I think what's also worth noting is that the time periods in which there were very modest increases were also time periods when we were going through the housing crisis in the country, and so there were, there was a period of, I think, six years where non-union employees did not get any cost of living adjustment. So that would be reflected in the adjustments that the council would have been voting on for themselves, the very point that Ms. Bassnight was making earlier.
Yeah, I would just add to that, Director, that, you know, you did have two really extraordinary events that occurred during the period we looked at, the sort of after-effect of the Great Recession at the very early, in the very early years of the 15-year period we looked at, and then, of course, the pandemic and the way that put something of a freeze on so many public sector activities until things sorted themselves out and some of the federal aid became available. So there were some years here, when for very good reasons, and the city had to or chose not to spend more, the question is, if, you know, without, of course, putting your future in front of people.
You're out again, Mike.
All right, thank you.
My question was around the COLA too, I think it was answered, but I just want to say, like, after this, you know, if we get the increases, if we can, I don't know if it's why we haven't got increases so long, I know like pandemic, different things played a role, but making it like something that happens every year, like automatically, or every time COLA adjustments happen, like we're included in that. I don't know if we can also do that along with, hopefully, matching up with what the compensation study has said that we should be, where we should be at.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, Council President. My question is, you know, very good presentation, and I really appreciate you doing the study. My question is, compensation is also based off job duties, job duties as well as job titles, right? So my question is, what they had to do years ago is irrelevant to what we as council members do today. So my question is, did you take, had you taken in consideration what we... what we do today as council members versus what other, what principalities do as far as council members, what their job duties are or what they do as far as serving their communities? Because we are here for service, so we service our community. So I just kind of wanted to know, did you take that into consideration when you looked at the numbers?
We, well, let me, let me start by agreeing that that is a relevant factor. That if duties have changed over time, that would potentially be a reason to think about an adjustment just in light of that, separate and apart from changes in costs or the general market. In terms of our work, we did, as you may have noted in one of the slides, and if you have a copy of the current working draft of the report, you know, I'm trying to think what slide it's on, you know, by the, or rather, page four. We thought to capture some measurables around number of sessions, number of committees, size of the council, size of council mannequins, staffs, and budgets. And then, of course, whether those communities consider the role to be full-time or part-time. Those measurables can't capture all of the story of what each of you does on a day-to-day, often seven-day-a-week basis. Would be happy to, you know, to take in additional information from members. If that's something you all would like to share, we can certainly do that before finalizing our work. It's just inherently difficult to benchmark that. I think you can look at some of the measurables we have, do some extrapolation based on the size of the communities and the budgets and the, and the number of constituents per member and those kinds of factors to, to get a handle on it. But ultimately, I think there's a qualitative element to making sense of that. And you all would know better than I would, as an outside consultant, how those responsibilities or activities may have increased over, over time.
Thank you. Follow-up, Mr. President.
Yes, may I follow up?
Is there, is that something that we could provide for him as far as what we do as council members? Michelle, you know, like our other tasks and duties as council members, not just the general, like the, you know, what I want to say, not just the surface of what council members do.
Yes, Michelle.
Yes, so Councilwoman Fields, yes, we can do that. We can look at like, for each district council person, like how many community, community meetings, like you attend monthly. We can look at like how many phone calls you receive. We can look at like the number of correspondence that you receive. We can look at the work that your legislative admin assistants provide with you. So, so we can look at that to provide that information to Mike Nadol.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Council President, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson, then Director Barnes, followed by Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, thank you very much, PFM, for your work. The only question I had was around the qualified benefit plans. City Council does have one, but I think it would be important if it could be analyzed, how we can make it better, obviously. So, I don't know if that's something you can work with, Mr. Nadol or Director Barnes. But we do have a qualified plan, it's just, hopefully, we could look at ways we could make it better. So, so that was the only comment that I had.
Okay, thank you. Director Barnes.
My comment was that I do have to hop off, but I do need to understand what Councilmember Johnson is asking so that I can make sure that I can.
Well, we have the table regarding retirement plans. And I don't know if Mr. Nadol had actually taken a look at ours because it didn't compare with ours compared to the other cities. That was the only question that I really had. I don't know if he started to dig into that yet.
I'll let him answer that question, but the work that would have to be done on any adjustments to retirement or pension plans would come through the city treasurer's office.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. If there's any questions for me, certainly I'll reach out to Michelle and try to be responsive to whatever questions you may have. I do apologize, but I do need to leave.
Okay, thank you, Director Barnes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Councilmember Harley.
Thank you. The point that I was going to add, as much as it does give me pause to have to vote on an increase and how that would look, seeing the study, obviously, and the fact that council is probably underpaid compared to other cities and just in general that we've taken a slower increase, very modest throughout the years, I'm okay because I know that a lot of work goes into what we do. And even though it's supposed to be a part-time position, I feel that some of us feel like this is full-time with the amount of work that we are doing in the communities. The other point that I wanted to make is that, closer and looking at where we are right now and the cost of living, in the city of Wilmington, why the rent and the property have gone up? So to buy a home in Wilmington is far more expensive than it is to live on the outskirts of Wilmington. And as elected leaders, we are required to live in our district. I've been fortunate because I'm at large, so I can live in any district. But if someone is required to live in their district and the cost of those properties to live there is higher, you know, that has increased, especially if you're a homeowner, me in my case, I just bought a home and I did pay a lot more for that home than I probably would have paid at any other time. And I wasn't going to bring up the point that Councilmember Fields did, but I do agree with her, and it takes it to a whole other level. We have four at-large council members, which means that the duties are not within a district. We're citywide. And although we may not always get as many calls as a district council person, we are invited and required to attend meetings throughout the city at events and follow up with some constituents and helping them as well. Sometimes they call us because of relationships versus their local council members. So just wanted to throw that out there as well. And of course, the duties that different council members sign themselves up to participate in. That's it, that's my point.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure who can answer this question, possibly Michelle now that Director Barnes left. But just looking at page fourteen, the mayor is an elected position, the treasurer is an elected position. And when you look at the graph from two thousand nine to present, the treasurer was increased eight point three percent, the mayor increased nine point four percent. And I, my question is like, what were the determining factors as related to them being able to get these increases from two thousand nine to present? And how, and why council members remained at the five point one percent? I mean, it's, it's just a question in terms of like, what were those factors? Because there's a possibility that that can help us in determining where we could and should be. Because first of all, it looks like we, we lagged behind from two thousand nine to present. So if you consider the fact that we're behind in increase or include that to what has been shared today, you know, what would that look like?
Michelle.
Yes. Good question, Councilwoman Harley. And one of the, one of the things that's actually missing from this chart is the, the non-union employees. So what has happened for city council is, city council's salary increases has always mirrored, mirrored what the non-unions has. So that hasn't always been the case for the mayor, nor the treasurer. For example, or when treasurer came in, you know, they, they, you know, like an increase was done for them. So they don't necessarily use the same mechanisms that council use, meaning our adjustments has always just been based upon what non-unions receive. Also, part of this compensation study is not only for, to look at city council, but it also going to look at the mayor's office as well as the city treasurer. It's just that, that part of the presentation or report hasn't been shared with us as of yet. They just wanted us to focus on council. So we will be able to look at that information probably soon as they make some decisions. No different than we have this report, we will have a report too on how the mayor's adjustments has been done as well as the treasurer's.
Follow-up.
Yes.
So, are you saying this nine point four percent is not the current figures or data? This is not current? Are you saying that it's more than this right now?
No, I'm saying, so, so the data that was provided by here, here is based upon like what has happened within the last, from two thousand and nine to present. So how did the mayor get to that nine point four percent? It was not based upon the same COLAs that council got, right? So council's basis for the five point one percent is just based upon what non-unions received from two thousand and nine to current. How the mayor got to his nine point four percent and how the treasurer got to the eight point three percent, it wasn't solely based upon what non-unions received.
Well, that's a good explanation. I don't know if it's equitable, but that's, that's the, you, you answered my question. And lastly, who determines, like, where, you know, who determines when there's a decision made, like, okay, this is what we're going to go with? Like how, what's that process? Is it the council members? I mean, on legislation, I'm just saying, on legislation, what, who determines that?
If I may, Chair?
Yes.
Yes, so, in this report, it makes reference to a, a compensation study report that was done, I want to say, back in nineteen eighties or nineteen eighty-seven. And when that was adopted, it basically leveled up the council salaries at that time. And then what that report said is, for every year going forward, council salaries will increase at the rate of whatever non-unions have. So that has always been the case. But if a non-union employee, you know, maybe receive a, a one-time payment or if they end the salary steps, their salaries increases, but that's not the same thing as a COLA. So that's another reason council salaries lag some. But to specifically answer your question is because it's based upon a compensation study report, which is the mechanism that council has been following.
Last follow-up, Mr. President.
Yes, your main.
Okay, thank you. And so, it brings me to my last point or comment is that it seems like a non-union benchmark seems to be a little out of scope versus the treasurer and the mayor because the treasurer is elected, the mayor is elected, and council members are elected. And when you think about service, we, you know, it has already been mentioned by my council colleagues, specifically Councilmember Fields and Cabrera pretty much piggyback off of what she said. And it just seems like to me, when we, when we talk about benchmarking, benchmarking typically, you, you compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. And like I said, you know, just as a point of reference, you would think that the benchmark would be the, the same benchmark for the treasurer as well as the mayor, simply because they are elected positions. Versus non-union is, is a, is a merited position. So it just seems, you know, a little interesting to me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Michelle.
Yeah, and if I can, and, and that's a, like, great, a great response, Councilwoman Harley. It's just that when council salaries mirror what non-union, that was just a process that has always been followed. And maybe perhaps it's time, you know, like, to look at it and to do something differently. You know, since we, we notice and, you know, when we, we compare ourselves with other elected officials, considering the mayor and the treasurer, that the numbers are, are lower. For example, a sitting session of council can't increase its own, its own salary. You know, a mayor that's coming in, a treasurer that's coming in, you know, they can change their salaries. So, but council don't have that latitude. Council sets the salaries for the next session of council. So I just want to mention that as well.
And that's legitimate, and, and I agree with that. But again, even though each sitting council doesn't increase the, increase for that sitting council, it still could have been considered for the next council. So the process, I get that. But I think, you know, again, I'm going back to comparing the apples to apples and the oranges to oranges. And so I do think there's an opportunity for us to consider it to be equitable based on these are elected positions and a non-union job is a merited position. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you. I think, I had two questions, and I think Councilmember Harley just hit on the first one, which was, it seems like our pay was based on a decision made in the eighties, the nineteen eighties. So if there's an opportunity, you know, of the next part of that question, which I think Michelle just alluded to was, is that something we should be considering changing? Just because that's the way it's been done since the eighties? Clearly, there are some inequities in how the city elected officials are, are being paid. My other question, and this might be from Mr. Nadol, is, is in looking at page five of the report, there's an indication that the state senators and representatives are at forty-nine and Newcastle County Council is at forty-nine thousand a year as well. Actually, based on this, county council makes more than the state senators and the state representatives. And I know that you, on page five of this report, it references that those jurisdictions are larger. However, when you look at the individual state senator and state rep and the individual county council person, their, their districts are more similar to what Wilmington City Council has. So I wonder if that was considered in how you were comparing what county council and the state reps get in comparison to ours? Because looking at that chart, we are grossly different in what the compensation is for the city of Wilmington versus the county. And I know that you also mentioned that there's, you referenced Dover and Newark, and their districts might, I don't know, if you looked at the district size versus the jurisdiction of the city or the, or the state. So that was just one question I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, and just to make sure I'm hearing you, the, by district size, you're referring to number of constituents per representative?
Correct. So for example, you know, a state senator, a state rep, they, their jurisdiction is the state of Delaware. Obviously, they work, you know, their general assembly. But the amount of constituents that they represent in their district might be more closely aligned with what, you know, and it may not be, but I was just wondering if that's something that we looked at? The, you know, versus just looking at the juris, you know, the city of Wilmington as a whole, comparing that to the state of Delaware, of course, is going to be apples to oranges. Thanks.
I think that's an excellent question or point, and we'll go back and take a look at whether we can layer that into the final version of our report and, you know, see what additional context it provides.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any other council members have any questions or comments? Is there anyone in the public that has any questions or comments? Okay, Michelle, do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, if I can, Mr. President, I just want to mention like about the next steps. So we do realize this is a draft report. So I assume like once we get the final report, and also the factor in some of the follow-up, which I would have a conversation with Director Barnes. Also, we'll be reaching out to Law Department because, you know, we do need to have an ordinance to be able to set the salaries for the hundred and ninth session of council and to find out, you know, can we do something based upon the final report, this final comp, you know, based upon this study? So. you know, based upon this study. So, um, that will be the next steps. Um, and just so that you know, um, I did go back to look at like if, if council, if we were to set these salaries right now for the hundred and ninth session of council, um, that would equate to a roughly, um, nine percent increase, um, because, for example, in fiscal year twenty-one, non-unions got two percent, twenty-two, they got two percent, twenty-three, they got two percent, and fiscal year twenty-four, they got two and a half percent. But, um, based upon, you know, what I heard, I mean, today, I mean, basically looking at some things from this compensation report, also taking into consideration how does the mayor determine his COLA as well as the city treasurer. Um, so we'll be looking forward to getting, um, the compensation report that lays out that information for them as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, also, council members, if you have any feedback that you want to give us or give each other offline, please feel free to do so. This is going to be a, a work in progress so that we can, uh, come up with the best solution moving, moving forward. Seeing no other hands raised, I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Second.
It's been moving second to adjourn. All in favor, say with your hand by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.